I think so.
So, good evening, everyone. The Planet Commission is having their meeting. Today's Tuesday, December 8th at 6:33. This virtual meeting is being held online. We have an agenda that is not too cumbersome, so hopefully we'll get through everything. Please mute your phones if you're not talking, so that we can have everyone talk clearly, so everyone can be understood. So we'll start with the call to order and roll call.
Sure. Mr. Baxendale? Ms. Shockley?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Plank Gallas?
Here.
Ms. Peniston? You did yes, and Mr. Muschek? You did yes as well.
Thank you all for joining. So we're going to have the public hearing first. Subdivision number 3653, Dave Davis and Tina Mangle, 33 Yarmouth Road, proposed two lot subdivision.
Good evening, members of the commission. Attorney Albert Vasco, representing Davis and Tina Mangle, with their application for a two lot subdivision at 33 Yarmouth Road in on Bell Island. As you recall from the last meeting, there's an existing house on the property that my clients will be moving to the southerly portion. The southerly lot of the two lots that they are going to create. And the northerly lot will, for the foreseeable future, remain open space. We continue the hearing the last time because we had not received the sign offs from the fire marshal and DPW, which we have received, and thank you Vanessa for getting that out to us right away. Essentially, you also asked for some photos of the the existing house, which, Brian, if you could share some of those photos with us. You can see that the existing house there was built in around 1908, so it's a fairly old house, but we're confident that the contractor can move it to the southerly portion of the lot. As you can see, there are some fairly large oak trees along the front of the property, and we're going to do our best to make sure that those trees remain. My clients have also provided a somewhat of a landscape plan for the other lot, and if they could show that to you, I think that would be helpful to show exactly what they're doing. My clients purchased the property to basically preserve the existing house, because they own a house which abuts the northerly lot on Wind Mirror Avenue that they just purchased recently, and they like this area. When they saw that this property was going up for sale, they jumped on it to purchase it, so that developer would not come in and put in, knocked out, demolish the existing house and put in two bigger houses. Davis, if you could chime in, or Tina, with what you are trying to do with the northerly lot, I think the commission would be very interested in that.
Yes, thank you.
And how, okay, share my screen. Let me just open up the document first.
Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so you can see our existing house that's on West Mir. And then on the back portion of the lot, we're working with a landscape architect. Eckerson Design, they're in South Norwalk, and we're going to be planting probably between 15 and 18 trees on the lot. We're going to plant a bunch of fruit trees. We're going to have some vegetable garden, and then we're also going to preserve. We spoke with the guys that are moving the house and where they're putting the I-beams into the house to lift it off the foundation. They're able to preserve the oak trees that are there, the two at the street, and then also there's a huge Japanese maple right beside it that they'll be able to preserve, and then over here, this oak tree shouldn't be a problem at all. So we've put a lot of time and effort into developing this landscaping plan, and as you can see, we we plan on utilizing that area and kind of making this our home base and our little feed our neighborhood garden here. Also, we wanted to show you, how do I go to the next?
See the pictures?
Yeah. So.
We can't see it yet.
We have to reshare when you pull that picture up.
Okay.
Okay, can you see now?
Yes.
Yes, this is the existing house. We actually had the shrubs just trimmed. You can see right here where the cutout is. That's where the proposed driveway for if we get approved. So this lot here, the north lot, will be behind our house, and then this would be the cutout for the driveway. The property line will be about here roughly. So we plan on keeping this oak tree. The lot line's about here, and then the rest of the house will be moved to the left there. And then can you pull through the other? Oh, just right here? Okay. So this is our house. You can see there's the old apron for the driveway there, so on this side, we're going to be planting a bunch of fruit trees. We're going to narrow this driveway. We'll keep a little bit of gravel just for like landscaping purposes. We'll keep this Japanese maple, and then we'll be landscaping this with trees and plants. So this is the site of the house. So you can see there is a pin. There is a pin, and then these are the two front pins for the front porch. So we are going to preserve the front porch. Other than these steps, these steps will be taken off on the side. We'll have front steps, and then there's an option, I guess, to put steps off the back. These pins are, this is not the lot line back here. This is actually, Bell Island has like a passageway, like a right of way for residents, so that's there. And this fence is actually the neighbor's fence, but it goes through the passageway. So there is over 15 feet between the house and the lot line back here. It just looks kind of closer because of the depth, the photo. And this is, so this is backing up of that last photo that I showed. So the the house will be like from here to here as far as width. Also notice how close the house is to the curb now. It doesn't, like, it doesn't, it's not
conforming.
conforming with the with the proper setbacks. So we'll be moving that to proper setbacks. So here's another view. The house, we just had its power wash, so it looks like it's new. And then, so this is looking, this is the proposed driveway. You can see this is where the house. Here's one pin, here's a back pin. And then this is the lot line. The neighbor's house is over here, so there are some nice trees in between here. The house would be about here, I'd say, and then you can't see the other lot, other line. So you can see there's plenty of room in the lot. We've preserved this cedar tree here that was leaning on the power line, so we had that trim and we got it all healthy again. And yeah. Sidewalks are nice and wide again, because we trimmed the shrubs, so that's our plan.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
It's a great plan, and I just am looking at that sidewalk that's lifted by the roots right by the tree. Is there any plan to just fix that one section there? Because the rest of it's in pretty good shape.
So yeah, so, you know, we haven't heard from DPW. I mean, I guess we don't know. The tree would have to, we've talked into two arborists. The tree would have to be taken out, and it's a beautiful old oak, because you can't disturb the roots. So I don't know. I don't have the answer to that question. I mean, if if they need us to take it out, we will. We'd rather keep the tree, but we understand it could be considered a hazard, so we will do what we have to do. If if they want it out, because they need this sidewalk level, then we would do that.
I don't, yeah, and I can't imagine they would want you to take that tree out. That's a beautiful tree. It's in good shape. And it's a oak, you know, they're the ones that don't fall apart.
Right.
You know, like a Norway maple or whatever.
Right.
So I'm a landscape architect, so I know what I'm talking about, I hope.
Yeah.
But the, there is a way, it's not aesthetically pleasing really, but you could just asphalt that piece. DPW may have another opinion, but that, because slabs, you know, whenever you have slabs, they get lifted up, and they create tripping hazards.
Okay.
And so in some places, like in our old neighborhood in South Norwalk, we have asphalt sidewalks that are easy to repair over roots, so it becomes like a little, it comes like a smooth bump instead of this, you know, this lifted slab where it's really hard. I mean, and at a minimum, you can just seal the lifts. Now, I'm speaking out of turn here, because this is not our purview. It's a totally
Great idea. That's a great idea, because we're going to have to put an asphalt curb in anyway, so we could have them do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It must be safer, I think, because, you know, obviously, that's, that would be for somebody of limited mobility, especially, or a child, you know, that that would be more of a tripping hazard, but the rest
Absolutely.
I'm all about preserving old sidewalks. I have an old bluestone sidewalk in front of my house, and it, you know, it's lifted up in a few places, so I have to reset it sometimes, but in any case, yeah, that that just popped out, but the rest of the plan, hallelujah.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Mike, we'll work with DPW to do what we can to actually preserve the tree and make the sidewalk smoother, so that the people can travel it without without any issues, obviously. So we'll work with DPW to determine what the best method would be to preserve the tree and fix the sidewalk, so that it's safe for people to walk.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have any comments from the public, Brian?
Yeah, so we can open up to the public. So if anyone on the call would like to speak, you can use the raise your hand feature now, and if you're dialed on a phone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand.
Thank you.
Not seeing anybody, Steve.
Okay, thank you for saying that. So we're going to close the public session now. And we'll go right into an action item. Brian?
Steve.
Any other questions for any commissioners? Any comments?
Steve.
Hi, Tim.
Hi.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank the applicants for preserving the house. I think it's so critical in that neighborhood to preserve the history, and I'm very appreciative of that. It's nice that you also want to preserve the tree. Most people don't walk on the sidewalk there, so whatever you can do to save the tree is more important. People just tend to walk in the street there. So thank you for trying to keep the history there.
Thank you, Tammy. Tamara, Mary, or Brian, you have any comments, questions?
No.
Okay.
Quick, endorse it completely. I agree with Tammy. It's a lovely house, a lovely property.
Thank you very much, commissioners. So should I, should I go right into the resolution?
Hey, you want me to share it, Steve, so everyone can see it?
Please, if you don't mind. We don't have Fran with us today, so thank you for your patience.
I'm sorry, can I just make a comment to the sidewalk before, yes? Sorry. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just want to go back to the, to the sidewalk. I just want to, that goes on record, that DPW, when we reviewed the application, we asked that a new footpath has to be installed along the the whole length of the house. We know that there is a problem, and that's a tripping hazard that we cannot allow to stay. It didn't come to our attention that there was the oak tree that was causing the problem, but what we have requested in the past is that it has to be a concrete footpath to meet existing on that side of the road that would need to be required. That was how we approve.
Thank you, Vanessa, but a footpath is 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 more narrow than a sidewalk, so.
No, it is. Yeah, so what happened is that we know that it will be very hard for them to to meet the minimum ADA requirements on the sidewalk. We measure, and then unfortunately, what they have there is not really a sidewalk, it's really a footpath. So we want to try to keep at least the same width that they have, but it has to be kind of new on new conditions. That's what was part of the request from DPW.
Okay, thank you. So let's make a resolution, unless we have any other comments about it. So let it be resolved. Can you go up a little bit more for me? Thanks, Brian. So let it be resolved by the Norwalk Planning Commission, that subdivision application number 3653 submitted by Davis and Tina Mangle, care of Albert G. Vasco Esquire and Five West Mir Avenue, and has shown on a survey entitled Preliminary Subdivision Utility Map of Property Prepared for Tina Mangle, number 33 Yarmouth Road in Waiton, Connecticut, or Norwalk, dated September 7th, 2007, and revised to October 15th, 2020, certified substantiously correct by Arkham Known Land Surveyors LLC, Norwalk, Connecticut. Let it be approved, subject to the following conditions. Now, these conditions, does everyone see them outlined here?
You don't have to read them.
I know, I'm not going to try, but as far as the footpath, Vanessa, is that in there under number nine? And those conditions is what was outlined by Vanessa just now.
So they receive a letter, Commissioner, they receive a letter with all our comments. So that's why it says that all that any and all conditions from now DPW are applicable to this approval. So PNC has a letter that we sent to them on how we approve.
Steve, the sidewalk, the footpath was part of the approval that we received from DPW.
Okay.
To to fix the southerly portion of the walkway, I believe, what the
Okay, so it's resolved
As well as the installation of the curb.
Okay, so it does not want installation of the new street curbs, and the waiver is granted, correct?
Well, we've, we want the curb and the sidewalk. I believe that was the only two things that we that we require.
So should we change that?
Be it further resolved. I don't think you guys need to, because what happened is that for us to approve, it comes under DPW, and then we need to do the sign off on the plan based on those conditions.
Okay, Steve and Brian, so
I'll get rid of that. I think it's it's clear.
We just get rid of that. You can do that. Thank you. I would appreciate that.
I would like to put one thing on the record, Steve.
Sure.
So that I would hope that based on our conversation just a few minutes ago, that the fact that that tree has the roots that would have to be removed to put in a concrete sidewalk, that DPW would allow an asphalt sidewalk in that location instead of concrete, because asphalt is is easier to mold over roots, and you wouldn't have to actually cut the roots, which would kill the tree. And I think this is very important. And the fact that it's a footpath, you know, I know DPW has their standards, but the fact that this is this would be fall under context sensitive design where it's, you know, it's more, it's sensitive to the fact there's a tree there, that it's a footpath. And I don't know how you feel about that, Vanessa, but do you think that's a possibility that you would be able to allow the asphalt substitution for the concrete?
Unfortunately, I believe that even for them to put the asphalt, we're going to get to the same problem with the roots. For them to be able to resolve that, they have to, they're going to need to, with the installation of the curb, and then by the time that they regrade that, the roots will be on its way. So I'm not sure if the difference between asphalt and concrete would make a difference. What we can try to do is maybe see if we can go a little bit along the roots, just see if we can save the tree. And so I'd rather not tie it up for the type of sidewalk to the to their approval for now.
Commissioner Darren Callie, Assistant Corporation Counsel, I just briefly, DPW is going to have to take a very close look at at this and determine to what extent they can have a grade that's appropriate. You could see from that picture that there's quite a significant elevation caused by the roots. So I think they're going to have to take a really close look at what they could implement as far as, you know, strategy, even assuming some deviation from their their standards, just because it is a source of liability for the city.
Thank you, Darren. So with that, with that deviation, could we put it in the wording, Brian, to have that addressed as we move forward with this application?
Commissioner, I just want to, I don't want to speak for the for DPW regarding the deviation. I just, I was just saying to the extent that 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 they went that route, they're still going to have to look very closely at it.
Well, I, so Vanessa, you mentioned these options here, Vanessa. How would you address that?
Well, we have to go look at the drawings again, but remember, all the time that we do sidewalks, and we come to this problem, unfortunately, a few times. At the same time, I know we don't, we want to save the tree. That's the goal for everyone, but at the same time, we cannot have something that can become a tripping hazard. So we can try to see if it is possible to get the footpath maybe behind the tree or closer to the curb line, if there is enough room. If not, we have to make sure that it will be level. And unfortunately, we may get into the root system of the tree. This will not be the first one in the city, unfortunately.
So what you're saying, what I'm saying, so what you're saying without saying is that there might be a resolve by removing the entire tree because of the root system being compromised?
Well, Commissioner, alternatively, it may require just quite significant. And Vanessa, just chime in where I'm off here, because engineering is not my forte. But in order to get a reasonable grade, you may have to to raise quite a a large portion of the sidewalk, so that it the grade doesn't change too significantly all at once.
I think for purposes of subdivision, the condition is fine, because they have to get DPW approval before they can start any construction or do any work on the site. So I think the condition covers what's going to have to happen on the sidewalk, and before they get any permits or the CO, then they, then that matter can be addressed. I don't think we have to solve that right here. I think if everybody's on the same page, then if we can save the tree, we'd love to save the tree, but we need to make sure that the sidewalk meets all ADA standards that are applicable and any other DPW standards that the city needs to enforce. And for peace
Thank you, Steve. Mike, one last comment?
Just for peace of mind for the applicant, and since everybody's here is present, as a landscape architect, I would advise that we, you just curve the sidewalk around. There's, there is space there, and you avoid cutting the roots, because that would be fatal. I mean, the tree will still be there if you cut the roots. But once you do that on an old tree like that, that's, it's not a good idea. So you're exchanging one public hazard for another, because then the tree is going to fall over in storm, because you've cut its anchor. So I would try to, you can, we've done this before in the city where you curve around, and there's a cushion there between the curb line and the sidewalk, that you could really curve around the roots and maintain the grade, because you really don't want to raise the grade either. To Darren's point, you don't want to raise the grade over tree roots, either because you'll suffocate the existing tree roots. So this is a delicate situation, but I'm hoping that there's a compromise when all the great minds at DPW get together, and I say that with all due respect to look at this, because that oak trees are that part of Bell Island is known for its older trees, and they're, they're a big part of the neighborhood character, so we do everything we can to save them.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. So let's move it forward.
Yep.
So we'll put a motion down there, Brian and Steve, you there? To approve the application as stated with with the stipulations. Could we get a vote?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? None? So moved, approved.
Thank you very much.
Manigals, thank you for your time, me attention to this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. A discussion and a decision on new applications. We have a 8-24 for 12-20 Building Management, Narumic School Kitchen Cafeteria Media Center Improvement Project Report and Recommended Action. I believe you have Mr. Low here, and
Good evening. Um, tonight I have my project team here, which includes James Julano and Michael Sasso. Los Sasso. Earlier this year, the city approved, including the planning commission, approved 3.5 million dollars for the construction of the new kitchen and cafeteria for Narumic School. I think this is part of, I think the one of the, one of the three remaining schools that has a combined cafeteria and gym. So we are going through a design process, and part of that process, we submitted a planning commission for 8-24 review. So if I may, I'm going to ask Mike to go for the presentation of the building and the layout, existing condition, also that the committee, commission have an opportunity to take a look at what the plans are, and we can go for a little more detail of plan. Mike?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Michael Los Sasso. I'm with Antonazi Associates. We're the architects for the project. If I may, I'd like to share my screen so that I can present our our plans this evening.
Sure. Mike, before you present, Mike, do you have before and after photos, before, how it is now, and what it would look like?
I do have some images included in the plans. Because of the the nature of small screens and Zoom conferences, I do also have access to aerial photos, if you, if you'd find that helpful to describe the existing conditions and the proposed additions.
Yeah, with different concern with the existing and proposed. Thank you.
Let me, let me share my screen if I may, and then, in fact, what I'll do is start rather than with the plans, I'll show you the existing aerial photograph here. Are you able to see my, my screen?
Yes.
So the the aerial photo here has been annotated to describe some improvements that we're proposing. As you're familiar, the the school is located on a parcel of land that's bordered by Strawberry Hill Avenue and King Street, immediately north, and just beyond the top of the image on your screen is Norwalk High School, and you're seeing the lower parking area just being clipped in the photograph. And then to the, to the right hand side, which is toward the east, is the track and field and associated with the high school as well. I do want to clarify, this image is actually out of date. It describes a access path that was originally proposed as a result of our conceptual plan that we developed for the project, and that's since been modified quite recently, and I'll describe that in greater detail. Currently, the school utilizes a gymnasium as their cafeteria and I guess auditorium or assembly space. And that's this lightly colored rectangle toward the south, which is toward the, toward King Street. This small trapezoidal orange shape is the existing warming kitchen that services the cafeteria. And we were engaged about a year ago in a, in a planning program that analyzed three different alternatives for the development of Um, program that analyzed three different alternatives for the development of, of the cafeteria kitchen. Um, the one that was ultimately selected uh, included the addition of, of a new uh, kitchen, which is approximately fifteen hundred square feet. Uh, to the north, uh, northwest of the, of the existing building. And the subdivision of a space that is currently the media center, but was. Uh, considered, considered by the uh, the uh, school to be underutilized. And so half is being allocated to the, a new cafeteria and the other half uh, will be uh, converted to a uh. Uh, sort of a STEM learning space. It's a learning commons, which is uh, based upon. Uh, a similar program that was implemented at Fox Run a few years ago. Uh, so if there, if there are uh, no questions specific to this image, I'll, I'll go back to the drawings.
Well, we're just referring to how it looks now and not just the aerial view, but you know, the layout now and how it will be proposed.
So currently, currently, much of this is the same. The only difference, you see these star shaped. Configurations, there's a similar star right here on the existing uh, building. Um, this, this image aerial is actually somewhat out of date in that um, the school has uh, recently had. A photovoltaic array applied to the, to the top and we have it depicted in our plans as well.
Mike, I think you just go to this drawing, because it shows the existing conditions and proposed.
Correct. Okay, so this is our um. Sorry, I'm having trouble with my uh, advance. Okay, here we go. So uh, this is a image, um, the uh, recently completed.
Unshare and then reshare, I think.
I'm sorry.
We're still on your PowerPoint. You may have to unshare and reshare. Your screen.
Okay.
There you go.
Got it? Oh, now I've lost it again. Apologize. Okay, are we back?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this is the uh, site survey, uh, which was recently completed and it's actually configured. In much the same way as the aerial photograph. So you can see here the outline of the uh, of the existing building. Um, there are. Uh, two drives, uh, actually three uh, points of entrance. The, the first is the eastern side, which is a, is a loop uh, that also provides access for parking for the school. Uh, this parking and, and loop are completely separate from uh, the parent drop-off loop, which is a two-lane. Um, drive that enters on the east side and goes one way to the west. Um, and then there's a third um, curb cut that is the uh, service access to the uh, western side of an addition that was built in uh, twenty thirteen. The original building uh, limit is essentially at this line. There were four classrooms added in uh, the late nineties and then four additional classrooms added in, in uh. Uh, two thousand thirteen or, or fifteen, I forget exactly the date. Um, so this, this is the existing condition and our proposed. Plan, sorry, wrong direction. Um, will include uh, the fifteen hundred square foot cafeteria addition, which um, removes the point. Uh, from the existing plan. Um, and as I alluded to before, um, the uh, the plan that I showed earlier had us connecting to the southern. Uh, edge of the parking lot that uh, serves uh, Norwalk High School. Um, we've subsequently uh, through discussions with the state of Connecticut, um, modified the plan. To eliminate an existing portable classroom. This classroom is located on the eastern side of the school. And um, it currently is a single classroom that um, is occupied, I, I believe, or was occupied by a pre-K. Uh, but has since been converted for overflow for uh, COVID uh, spacing. Um, that portable uh, was always intended to be temporary and uh, the Board of Education is uh, elected to remove it. Which allows us to introduce a new access drive that travels uh, from the end of the service drive. Around the building and allows us access to the kitchen uh, on the western side, north, northwest uh, face of the building. Uh, before I, actually, before I move off of this plan, uh, I neglected to mention, I'm joined tonight uh, by Brian Phillips. Uh, who is representing Langen Engineers. Uh, Langen is our um, civil engineer as well as um, they're providing uh, geotechnical environmental services. Uh, Brian, do you have anything uh, you'd like to add to the discussion relative to the site plan?
Sure, yeah. Hey, everyone, uh, Brian Phillips here from Langen. And yeah, if you wouldn't mind just zooming in a little bit, Michael, I can. So yeah, what, what we're proposing here is a, you know, eighteen-foot width access drive, uh, essentially just for um, delivery vehicles. And you know, we're, we're proposing to try to minimize uh, disturbances as much as possible. Um, you know, this, this drive will. Cause us to have to remove a couple of trees. Um, you know, we're looking to maintain. Uh, a couple of large trees in the back. Um, and. Because of this slight increase in impervious, uh, you know, our propose, our proposal for stormwater is to install a, a rain garden similar to. An existing rain garden, which already exists on site in the um, southwestern corner right over there. So I guess, yeah, if there's any, any additional questions that anyone has, I'd be, have an answer.
Yeah, I do, Brian. Thanks for asking. I see that the soft costs are uh, you know, twenty-seven, twenty percent of the total cost of construction. Um, there's a lot of planning into this. Um, is it because of the infrastructure, the topography of the site? Is that where most of the planning is going towards?
Well, there, there's an ex, there is not extensive regrading. Um. I think, you know, site materials and you know, there will be some earthwork required. Um, you know, some demolition of the existing temporary building and existing gardens in the rear. Um, but that's really the extent of the project.
Okay, so no blasting, no uh, no blasting, nothing outside of the normal?
No, no blasting is anticipated.
Commissioners, you have any questions, comments? None. Mr. Low, any, any, any other comments you wanna share but regardless application?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay, all right. Uh, then we would move it.
Oh, uh, we do, we do have some additional drawings to share if, if uh, the commission is interested in.
Sure.
Um, and I, I do wanna mention too, let me share my screen again, the um. On the site plan itself, there, there are some existing um. Recreational spaces, some um, playgrounds that we wanna avoid impacting as well. And going to the next image. The um. Speaking again to the request to understand the existing conditions, this is a, a plan that describes the uh, the existing layout. We've focused now on the, the central uh, section of the school where we're uh. Doing the, the work associated with the modifications for the building. Um, as I mentioned before, this is the existing uh, cafeteria, uh, gymnasium cafeteria. The warming kitchen um, serving area is located here. Um, and one of the things that was specifically requested to be addressed as part of our development was um, the fact that students uh, convey through this, this corridor. Uh, and collect their lunch um, at the servery. They, they result in a backup that causes a lot of internal uh, circulation problems for the school. Another concern um, with the existing facility is that this existing gymnasium, aside from uh, poor acoustics, uh, lacks any kind of uh, exterior light. There's no windows at all. Uh, so it's kind of a dismal place to, to actually have lunch. Um, the uh, the intent in uh, the work that we'll be doing is to try to follow the guidance that was uh, originally provided for, I think, the majority of Norwalk schools. Uh, where there's family-style food service um, and a pleasant environment to actually enjoy uh, the break during the day for, to eat. This is an image of uh, the proposed floor plan. Um, what we've uh, introduced here is a uh, new addition on the back, as I mentioned, the fifteen hundred square feet of new um, kitchen area. Uh, a servering uh, space which separates the kitchen from uh, the new cafeteria. Uh, we've, for all intents and purposes, divided uh, the room in half. The existing uh, uh, media center in half and the portion on the western side. Uh, is allocated to new uh, cafeteria space. We've also incorporated in this plan a small, um, I, I think it was a um, faculty lounge. Um, and in order to get the seating and circulation that we need, we've absorbed that as well as part of this plan. And then to the east or to the right of the plan, we have uh, the, the revised uh, learning commons, which will be outfitted with. Technical um, enhancements and uh, the intent is to provide uh, movable furniture for flexibility. And uh, twentieth, twenty-first century learning. I'll mention as well, because it's uh, it looks like a room, but it's not actually on the exterior. Um, the, because of the, the roof-mounted uh, PV system and the structural uh, capability of the existing school. We've opted uh, to retain uh, ground-mounted uh, condensing units, which are part of the new HVAC system that'll be. Um, added for uh, for, to support the kitchen, the, the cafeteria and the learning commons. And these are proposed to be screened by fencing and also plantings. This image is the roof plan.
Mike, I think that's, I think that's enough, because uh, I think.
Thank you.
I hope the commissioner have any longer.
Sorry, thank you.
Thanks, thanks for that. I really appreciate it.
Yes. Quick question. How many children can be seated in the area where you're creating the cafeteria?
It accommodates uh, seventy-two students. There's nine tables that are capable of seating eight per table. Um, and the school is anticipating uh, four waves of, for food service.
Thank you.
So those waves are for two grades each?
Yes.
Okay. And uh, the old warming area now, what would that be used as?
It's been allocated as a multipurpose space.
Okay.
It's actually a combination of, and then some storage room, so.
Okay.
What other question, Steve?
Sure.
Um, you're saying you're gonna renovate the existing library. So are you taking the library for new cafeteria?
Yes, we're using about half the library. What happens right now, the library is oversized. Uh, one of the reasons why I'm doing, one of the reason we're doing this is so that we can capture half the space for new cafeteria, the other half for uh, for media.
We kinda missed you, we kinda missed you, uh, Alan, the last part you mentioned.
Oh, we captured, we captured existing library and divided about half of it. Half is gonna be the new cafeteria, the other half is gonna be the media center.
Did I, did I answer your question tomorrow?
It, it just sounds like um, you're taking some of the facilities for learning tools. Which exists in a library and is it going to be replaced anywhere else? That, the, the students need a cafeteria, but they also need a library.
The, the taste library is very different than traditional libraries. Um, even the value of books. Quite different from what, what, what it used to have.
And then just, just a reminder that the planning commission voted to approve this project as part of capital budget last year. So we did vote to, to fund this project.
We, we, the size of library is substantially hu- larger than what it needs to be in today's world. And the, the plan is developed with the principal and administrative staff at the, at the school. So the real needs are not the way this now, I mean, in the size-wise. So we are, uh, the proposed area is sufficient to more, uh, to, to, for the new media center that we're gonna provide. So that it's gonna be a new media center, it's, it's, it's half the size existing library, but it's, it's sufficient to meet the current needs, because the. The value of books is substantially less, so it's a lot, much less shelving and everything else. So the design that we propose, it's actually, it's a, it's working with the school administration to, to come up the overall size of the facility.
So are you replacing this with computers? Or is that what the administration's going to look at? If you're taking away the books, are you replacing the learning tools with computers?
In today's, in today's classroom, all the kids have computers already. So it's like the old days, we have computers in, in, in the, in the library. So it's, they have in the classroom with computers already. So the library is, we call it media center. Um, if, Mike, if you're gonna show the drawing again, the, the use of the media says very different than traditional library in today's world. So there's different type of desks. Uh, do you have a, do you have a view of what the, what the new media center would look like furnishing? I think you have that. This is very different from the way a, a library, traditional library is. So you can see on, along the perimeter, there's shelving for books, but it's minimum amount of it. Mike, do you have a picture of the furniture, picture of a, 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 a view of what, what the media center looks like?
I do. Are you able to, I'm sorry, I.
Oh, then you got, it's the other file, right?
Yeah, let me open this up here. Um, I, I have two images that I'd like to share. This, uh, this first image uh, actually describes uh, what's existing at Fox Run. And this um, this was kind of a, a goal of um, the, the folks at Narumac to emulate uh, this particular space. And you can see that we haven't eliminated all the books, um, but I would say probably uh, right-size them is maybe a better term. Uh, but in, integrated in um, again, with flexible furnishings. Um, and uh, and there's a technology component that's unfortunately not well described in this particular view, but. Uh, is represented through um, the, the screen in the back. Let me uh, switch now to the proposed furnishings that we have. And again, we've attempted to. Um, to emulate that, that same model and that's uh. Depicted in the type of seating you see here, rolling cabinets, or I should say shelving that's available for uh, books. As well as um, this modular, modular serpentine uh, style furnishing. It's also capable of storing books as well.
Yeah, the, the, the media, the, the media center, really, all the kids were at their own laptops and stuff, so it's not like permanent com- computers set up. Uh, and also they, they do projects in there, so it's not like uh, a traditional library nowadays anymore.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, thank you. For that, we're gonna move on.
Thank you, Mike.
Eight, I think Alan's still staying on, right, Alan?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, eight dash twenty-four referral thirteen dash twenty building management disposal of city property at the intersection of West Cedar and Scribner. Report and recommended action.
Yeah?
Yes.
Um, well, I, I think about two to three years ago, the adjacent property, the city owns a corner intersection at. West Cedar and Scribner Avenue, I think it's the southeast corner. I guess there's a, as part of your package, there's probably a site plan in a package to show exactly where it is, is near, it's an intersection near uh, Best Buy. Um. I think that there's a level piece of, leftover piece of uh, intersection, I believe some time ago. I don't even know how long ago. I think there's a intersection improvement project to square off the intersection. So there's a triangle piece that's left that the city maintained. Um, the adjacent property owner has come to us, probably about three years ago, to request this, whether the city would like to sell their piece of property. Uh, there's different reason why we weren't interested at the time, but through a number of conversations, a number of meetings. Um, with the Land Use and Building Management Committee for the last two to three years. Uh, the committee have resolved that we would consider sell this property. And it's a triangle piece, the, the proposal is that we will sell that piece of property based on uh, a price value. And we will reserve a yeaseman over existing uh, Santa Sewer Line. And on the other hand, on their property, part of their property, part of, part of, part of the city right away for West Cedar Street is actually. Transpass over their property. Um, thank you. All right. If you're gonna go to the other drawing, uh, the site plan, they probably shows a little better. Yeah, you, you can see here, um, this is a piece of property and then where the hatchmark is, is the sewer line, Santa Sewer Line. So we do, the city sells the property, the city will, we, we, we required that we maintain a yeaseman over that property. And Brian, if you don't mind, if you go to up, go up a little bit. Little further, little further, there is. So right now, we look at that area, the city's uh, West Cedar Street is actually transpass over. Uh, the private property. So as part of this land sale to the adjacent property, which is three-color LCC, LLC. Um, they will sell us in a way, that piece of uh, their property, so that we can maintain a proper right-of-way worth along West Cedar Street. Um. That's what's being requested, we, we refer from the Land Use and Building Manage Committee, a common council. To the planning commission for your consideration. Again, this. To the planet commission for your consideration, again, there's no sales price that this will be based on the price value of the property.
Thank you, slow, that's a high traffic corridor right there, as you know, crossing the street there. That's heavily trafficked up the hill, a lot of kids getting to the plaza from that from that area there. So when you talk about selling the other piece back, the easement, they will have a clearer walkway from the. The Cedar Street with the entrances to the plaza where the four way stop sign is or stop.
Yeah, we will extend further, but I don't know what DPW is playing in the future, go further, further north, I guess. But yeah. It's important to maintain a travel lane with along West Cedar Cedar Street, so. Getting that that piece on top, it's a it's somewhat important to DPW, so the city actually. Not going on.
Yeah, if you come down a little bit where it says Suncrest Road and West Cedar right over there, where it says asphalt sidewalk. Up a little bit more, nope, up up to the right, yes, down some, is there a crosswalk right there now?
I don't know.
I don't, I don't, that's a, that's a hard street to cross, a lot of kids.
That's my neighborhood, there's no crosswalk there.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, because I was going to just say, but I wanted to ask because that's a construction company that you're proposing. Landscaping slash construction. I I just, I I realize it's not a very usable piece of land right now, but. They're storing right now a lot of landscaping. Right now, I I don't know how it affects it, I just. I guess I just want to ask the question is. There any limitations about the use of that? I I realize right now it's not even used as a park or anything, it's just this piece of grass. But it's very congested in that area and the particular business that wants to buy it does do a lot of storage of. Materials that if they're near the street, I don't know about the safety of them, but I'm not really sure, Alan, so if you could clarify.
Sure, um, I think I will leave, I will leave product to Brian to answer. But previously, I think this is the property should not be the Jason property, the way they're using previously. It's not construct, they they are not allowed to use a construction lot. So they were actually non, what's the word? Not, it's not nonconforming, it's really, they're using the property. So the zoning department had put them in notice previously and they have removed all the construction. Equipment, it's upper piece of property. The last we checked before, that's the reason why the the land use and building manager committee. Did not want to entertain the request because they were just became in violation of the zoning requirement because they used to store. Construction vehicle, so that's why the city, the cities land use committee did not entertain their requests. But since then, they have complied with zoning regulation and removed, remove construction. Equipment off the property and zoning, zoning staff has gone and then inspected it. And con concur that they are no longer using, misusing the property. The reason why they want the property from the city is that they're looking to do a a, I think a residential and. Ground level office project, I don't know the detail of it. So and that's the reason why we we consider it because it it they. Because they needed parking and they want to use a, they want to use under, under. Under because there's great change there, they want to take a take advantage of great change, put a little parking below gray, but you know, to access it. It's easier to come in from West Cedar along the property they acquire from the city, so have a driveway coming in. In terms of intersection and visibility, because the way that the the city. Will require the preservation of the easement over the San Antonio Sewell Line, so the corner will not be developed. Would not be any structure on it because it's a, it's a, they can't build on it, so the whole corner would pretty much stay. The way it is and the further back would be. You know, depending what the development plan they they will submit to the planning zoning commission later on.
And Alan, I have another question because this is also the area where the. Your work Housing Authority is going to be developing some. Apartments nearby. This is an intersection that already has a lot of traffic problems, I. I don't know that it's a problem, but I'm just wondering how are we thinking about this whole area and the fact that. That area is going to have further development and greater density, which I don't object to because I think it's great with the housing authorities. Proposing, but. Do you have any thoughts about what this means as we're building up the density in this area?
I don't, um, I have not. The 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 condition sale of this property, it's not, we are not. The city city has not taken their position as a Jason property owner to to. The sale of the property is not based on the the development. Ability of of the the Jason property. I'm not sure I express it correctly, we did not look at what they can build or not, they cannot build, I guess the zoning regulation dictate what they can build on their property or not. I think when they approach the city, they basically want to use the property for access. For a lower level parking structure. I don't know what their final plan is going to look like. But the way we look at it was that the property currently not being used. And also it's a, it's a maintenance thing for the city. Even to sell the property, we still keep a little bit of green area in front because the nature of the. The the easement, that restrict them from building anything on it. So at some point when they submitted a plan for development on the property and portion of this new property. The zoning, zoning, I'm not sure planning has a has the ability to reveal it, but. It definitely go for zoning for approval, so all those those question in terms of size of the development and and access and what landscaping or that. Would be would be subject to the approval process, only approval process. And I'm just going back to the question about crosswalk. I'm not the traffic engineer, not the DPW, but it's. When, I'm not sure, I think typically we would like to see crosswalk at the intersection, I know that this. Sun Suncrest Road is an intersection, but unprotected crosswalk, it's a little bit dangerous. And also when it's close, so close to existing one, it's just compound the issue sometime because. You may stop and go for a crosswalk, and there's another one and people, the hesitation is a little awkward for for motorists because. United in anticipating a crosswalk, so just speaking. I wouldn't think the DPW would want to put a crosswalk after another cross is so close to each other because somebody may drive through and. Had to stop and stop again, it's just, it's just a unusual situation that create. Awkward traffic.
You know, Alan, you know, Alan, you have, you have a good idea that you mentioned there, so if you look at Suncrest and Scribner. Over there, if there was a crosswalk crossing the street, a lot of the pedestrians from. That area could have, they could move down or push a little bit further down. You see where it says Suncrest Road and Scribner, there was a walk, a crosswalk across the street, because a lot of traffic from Connecticut Avenue to the plaza. There's a lot of cars there and a lot of piling up over there, but if a crosswalk could be further down on the street, like a half a block, you see where I'm pointing? You see where is that, Suncrest and Scribner? I don't know if that might alleviate down for no down further, down Scribner towards the other Suncrest. Nope, no, 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 I'm sorry. It's hard, I can't, to the left, to the left, to the left.
Going away from, yeah. It's like towards Best Buy, it's because there's a lot of people that cross the street. They go across the street from Suncrest because there's also a bus stop near there. I believe there's a bus stop on Scribner that is. I believe it's, I believe it's where Suncrest comes out on Scribner, there's a but, there's a bus stop around there someplace.
There was a crosswalk right there, it would habitually, they'll be able, because with the new developments, there'll be more traffic going to that plaza. There was a crosswalk there that would alleviate. Some of that burden if something was to be developed on that on that property. I'm just making a, just a fun, okay, and any other questions or comments?
Oh, hi, it's Jessica, I just wanted to say that. We at Transportation Mobility and Parking can look at a crosswalk in that area, so. I think what I'm hearing is to look at it around the bus stop, which is, I think approximately around the white building just to. The right of the Scribner Avenue. Right where that Best Buy, the corner is sort of the top right corner is, I think the the bus stop is some somewhere in there. So we can look at TNP, I'll ask, I'll ask the team to look at it tomorrow and and we can. Catch face with Alan and Vanessa and just re revisit this conversation and have the team take a look.
So could, could I ask a question of Steve? Because I I realize that, you know, as we're looking at the authority we have as planning commission, et cetera, that things tend to get. Divided up as decisions around small, small, small parcels. But there is a lot more density going into this area and we're talking about create, it sounds like they're talking about creating parking, et cetera. And that is a. An intersection that gets very backed up on the weekends and so. I I'm just wondering, Steve, if you could give us some guidance as a planning commission, how do we look at this, given that we're being asked about? Putting up a piece of property for sale, that's the decision we're being asked to make. But it is part of a larger context and I don't know quite how to. Take that into account, can you give us some guidance, please?
Sure, so your your role in this application is strictly looking at. Whether the sale of this property is consistent with the or not inconsistent with the citywide plan. So that's, you know, and I believe Brian had provided language in the resolution that is consistent with that. What happens after that property is sold goes through a separate process. It's a little hard to speculate on what the property owner will do until he actually proposes something concrete, he had some different plans in the past. But that was several years ago, so you know, the markets obviously changed. Done a one eighty in the last year, so whether those. Options he was considering are still viable at this time is another story. So what will happen when when he eventually submits this, his application, he's going to have to submit a site plan. Showing how the property is going to be used, where the parking is going to be. What the traffic impacts are, DPW will look at at that time to see if there's any driveway location issues in terms of lines of sight. Whether the location is appropriate, given the proximity to the next intersections, whether the sidewalk. Area in front is appropriate or not, so all those items will get looked at. By the either by the zoning commission or by city staff when the actual application comes forward.
Yeah. We're not, we're not, we're not experts when it comes to traffic, as you know, but. The roundabout idea with the parking lot is might be something to look at, I'm just saying, I know there's a slope there, but. You know, we put good minds together, something might be able to come out of this to help everything. Any other?
I have a question.
Questions or comments?
I've, this is Tamra, I have a question. Since this is city property, why aren't they opening up for competition? To other sellers, I understand that the seller has made an approach for this property because it's. Something that he's interested in, but taking into consideration. The turnaround in Norwalk property in the last year. Why can't this be opened up to other sellers, to other sellers for a competitive price?
There's, there's two basic reasons, one is that we need something from them. We need to buy a portion of the property on West Cedar so that we can. Maintain it right away with this, so we need something from them. The other thing is that by the time you put the easement that we acquired for the sanitary sewer on top, there's not enough buildable area. For for us to market value to that that we advertise, even we advertise, it happened property, we, if you advertise it. There's the property first is pretty small. The second reason is that once you put the easement over the property, there's not enough buildable square footage to to for for. For a developer to come in to build something. So those are two basic reasons, I mean, fundamental, we do need something from him, from the property, so that we can. We're not swapping, but you know, we are buying something from them, we, you know, we have to acquire their process instead of going to. Eminem domain or something to get their property from, from portion of their property, we are doing a friendly. Land sale on both side that they sell us something, we we are, we are selling our property to him. Again, by itself is, we we don't see there's a, there's a real value, it's only the value really to the Jason property owners. That's the reason why we we go, we're working directly with them. And this, we, this conversation, we have this conversation with the law department as well as the purchasing department in terms of meeting. Public bidding requirements, because those those are big two fundamental reasons why. We we are talking directly with them, typically we would advertise if don't, if not because of the. The the needs of property on both sides as well as the the limitation of property as a buildable piece of property.
Eve?
Yes.
I'd just like to make the observation that. The strip mall on the corner is a hundred percent blacktop, the Best Buy. Parking lot is a hundred percent blacktop, we're losing green space at the Colonial Village, which is going to be. Further developed. And that. Area. All like borderline blight before the HBSC bank went in on the corner of the post road and Scribner Avenue. And that's like the only little green space there and we're we're losing trees in the city every day. And I think. It would just be a tragedy to lose any more green space for, you know. A contractor to potentially expand his yard or put his driveway on Scribner Avenue, which. I'm not the DPW, but I would guess they would find that to be a horrible intersection to have car, cars or trucks. Turning on and off to Scribner Avenue. I would just advocate for keeping it and keeping it green. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Any other comments?
Yeah, I I have one.
Okay.
I drive by there every day and many times I've gone out and cleaned it up. Because it was covered with trash, there's like a wind tunnel there and the trash blows down. From dumpsters behind Patel Brothers. It goes out through the parking lot, I mean, it's, it's just a. Always trash on that corner and I've, I can't tell you how many years, I've lived around there for twenty years. That I've gone out and filled bags and bags of for trash. And so it's obviously, it's not a park. So it doesn't fall under the purview of the Parks Department to maintain. It's just one of those odd spaces that gets forgotten about, the city doesn't have enough staff, obviously, to go out. Clean up every street corner. So short of, you know, some private entity like myself, pick cleaning it up and picking up trash. I would prefer this be in private hands. And especially if it's going to improve a property value and potentially the grand list. As opposed to land that is not generating any income for the city and in fact is just generating a trash eyesore. That no one seems to want to maintain. So it seems to me like it makes sense and then, of course, it makes the property more valuable. Because you're removing the encroachment under this, where the encroachment goes under the city street. That is a, that's a, would be, I consider, I guess that would be a liability for any future. Development or any future sale on that property to know that the property goes under a public street. You know, that's, that's always a big red flag, it's like a, you know, there's liability issues, all kinds of stuff. So I would support this because it's a, it it solves a lot more problems than it creates. I agree that there's a lack of green space there, but. I would argue that any development on this property would follow the updated drainage standards. And actually improve any runoff from what's there now on a, what's, you know, basically an illegal contractor yard. And. And and of course, the parking lot at Best Buy and the other parking lots you see were done decades ago. And are not up to standard, but as. You know, projects change hands, they they get brought up to updated standards and actually they improve water quality. A lot of people think new development. Or pavement means more runoff, but actually with the standards, it doesn't, so. And I actually, a lot of those trees are invasive, they're Norway maples and they're not, it's not, would not be considered like a park. Quality, good trees, they're a tree of heaven. They're just basically weed trees that have grown up, so I would hope that any improvement, oh, I also just want to endorse. The idea of a roundabout there would be awesome with continuous flow. That would solve the traffic problem because you wouldn't have the four way stop signs, very awkward. You know, people hesitate and it's scary, you know, like you're, you're not sure if you want to go. And, and the four-way stops are always a, a lot harder to keep traffic flowing than even a two-way stop. So I would, I would argue for a, a roundabout there if we can look at that. But you obviously, we're not giving up that potential by get, by selling this bit of land, I don't think.
Steve, you moved it.
Steve? This is Tamra. Steve? Can there be any type of compromises? I agree with Tammy about the green space and that there needs to be some, some green space in that area. When we sell to the construction company, can there be any? And I know we're getting an easement as well. Any type of provision where we can put up trees on our easement? Or just something to give that community some type of green space?
I'm, I'm assuming you're asking Steve Me is not supposed to be Ferguson?
Ah, I guess Steve, whoever can answer. That ability to keep at least some green space in that area. It is a heavily trafficked area and just some type of green space for the community.
Hey, Tamra. Darren Callian, I would just add quickly and Steve, I'll let you answer the question. But as, as a practical matter, you know, the, the easement we're talking about is a, is a, it's underground. I'm not sure if it's a sewer easement or sanitary sewer or, but it's, it's essentially an underground pipe. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a place where you want to plant trees. I presume DPW would take that position. Also, I think to the extent that you limited or restricted the property rights transferred, it's going to undermine essentially the desire to, to even acquire it by the adjacent property owner. So I think there's some practical problems with applying it that way. But that's, it's conjecture.
The business owner is a landscape, does landscape work? Is there any way? I, I'm just thinking, I know there's no way to regulate it, but is there any way to encourage that they be creative about how they develop that space? I don't know. I know that's not really, that's not really our purview, so I apologize.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen Brian, but that space that they currently have, they have a lot of heavy duty trucks.
They do.
And if they're packed up, they're packed, they're backed all the way to the road. Like, so would this be something to remove those, that equipment? Or would they just be expanding what they've been doing before?
Steve, technically, they, I mean, from that aerial image, it looks like what's there is not supposed to be there. And it's a B2 zone, the business two zones. So there's two types of contractors uses you could have. You could do a contractor's office. You could do an indoor contractors, it's called an indoor contracting yard, which neither use allows you to store materials or trucks outside on the site. So if they were to do any, either of those two uses, everything would have to be contained within the building.
So with that being said, since they're currently using a, a space that's not what should be intended to expand on that relationship to selling them a parcel. I guess Tamra's question is more is what jurisdiction do we have on the use? If they're not doing it right now, could they not do it right again? Just a blanket question.
If they can always not do it right again, then they would just, it would start an enforcement action if they, if they did something that was in violation of the regulation. So this, this gentleman has been looking at this property and Alan could probably clarify the timeframe, but for several years and we've told him from the beginning, you know, don't even bother pursuing this until you clear up any of the violations you have on your property. So prior to it even getting to the council level to, you know, kick off the 824 referral back to the Planning Commission, we made him clean up the violations that were out there. I haven't been out there in a month or had staff been out there in a month. So I don't know if he's, since he's got to this point, has reverted back to where it was. Last time our staff was out there, it was not in violation.
Well, let's take a look at that based on what we see and then we'll get back to it. Any other questions or comments anyone has?
Um, just a reminder, I don't think you guys actually took action on the prior agenda items. So you'll need to, to do that as well. On this one, the staff did put together a resolution for your consideration. Obviously, it's your, your purview to decide whether to go with that resolution or vote contrary to that. Just keep in mind that should you do that, the common council has the ability through super majority to override any decision you have. You could also add a caveat to that request to the council specific to this proposal to, you know, request that perhaps landscaping be included along the areas, not within the easement. If you wanted to see if there were some, something that could be done along those lines. That would also get looked at if he ever came back with a future site plan application. The zoning commission may look at requiring landscaping or screening or those kind of things.
Thank you.
May I have a, ask a question?
Sure.
This is for Steve Kleppen and Brian Baker. The staff, when they gave it the all clear, when they had cleaned up their violations, because, you know, that I always saw dumping from the street as well over that corner, over that hill. And it was always like just barrels and crap, you know? I mean, especially in the winter, when the leaves came off the trees. It was, you know, it was an eyesore. And so I haven't seen it. I haven't really paid attention in the last month. But my question is, you said they cleaned up the property. They, they fixed their violations. Was that a, was that storage of material only? Or was that a use violation that they stopped, which would have been storage of trucks? Because I know that is a, they, they do break the trucks right out onto that street, that little street that goes over the hill to, you know, the Polish delis on the other side. It's like this little cut through. And sometimes it just looks like one big giant truck parking lot up there. And I always wondered, you know, how is this allowed? But has all that been cleaned up as well? Or was it just the storage of the materials? So was it use or was it a storage or both?
On the, the property in question, it was both. So you had piles of material and I think they had been stockpiled there probably a long time. And I think they had some trailers and probably some, I don't know if it was functioning equipment, but he did have some equipment there at one time as well.
Well, I, I would argue if this sale is going to help clean up that property and if it was going to be found another use that would be more compatible with the neighborhood than a contractor's yard, whether it's illegal or not, it certainly goes a long way to helping clean up that blight that is there. And this sale would potentially make that property theoretically more valuable for another use, which would be a, a higher and better use than what it has been for as long as I can remember. So I'm, you know, I, I would be in favor of this action. But if other commissioners don't feel comfortable taking that, any action on this tonight, I'm, you know, I'm fine with that. I, I just, I don't see any, I, I think the other mitigating factor here is the, the fact that their property goes under the street on the other, on the curve. And as Alan showed us, and that is a real problem that this is going to solve.
So here's the resolution if anyone wanted to take a look.
Steve, I think we should put a caveat in about something about the development. There's a large gradient that's all you've commented on behind for a start. There's a limited amount of green space. We have an easement across it. The way that's developed is very important. It can't be a contractor's yard. I think Brian Baker suggested it can't be a contractor's yard. It's going to be a contractor's office, hasn't it, Brian?
Yeah, so it cannot be a contractor's yard. So there can't be the storage of piles and materials there.
So I understand we may be treading out of our remit a little, but some hesitation on making sure that that land, land is, if sold, is used the right way should somehow be built in as a, as a recommendation or preference here. I understand it's probably up to zoning then to take it on or the council, as Steve says. What do you think about that, Steve? Would you ever, Steve, tends cares to comment or Brian?
No, no, I thought you told my.
I mean, I don't think you have to.
I, I, Brian, I agree with you, Baxendale, 100%. Having some caveat there in place. At the same time, you know, we know what they're doing now or what they just attempted to change. But to expand that use to that corridor would not be the best decision from us, for us to actually make. So I'm actually leaning towards a, you know, a responsible decision that we could preserve what's there and not carry out and enable some entity or persons or parties to not really understand what we are about as, as a city. So Steve Kleppen and Brian, we're looking for some verbiage or some understanding that we can protect the interests of that corridor for all those, including the pedestrians.
Well, if, if you wanted to, you know, if you wanted to not endorse the 824 referral, you could simply just indicate that you feel that, you know, consistent with the, you know, I don't, I don't have a specific section of the citywide plan to quote you, but you could indicate that you feel the need to preserve green space in, in this area is more important than transferring the property that way.
Yeah, I say that because even part one of the P O C D, it says the goal of Norwalk has a diversified economy with a larger business tax base and more highly quality, good jobs for residents. I'm thinking it should be more towards the P O C D for pedestrians and, and the connectivity of, of those, you know, those in the area. So I feel like this is just something that we can maybe, you know, look at closer, you know?
Steve, you also made another suggestion that I didn't quite understand about how it'd be developed. Could you repeat what that idea was?
So you could leave the resol, I mean, so you have, I, I see you have two options. One is to not, not move the 824 forward, just deny it based on the reasons I, I stated previously. Or you could go with this resolution and then where there's that, be it further resolved, that second one there that's blank, you could have language in there that you're, you would recommend that the council work with the, or consider requiring as much of this land to remain open as possible, something along those lines.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we should look closer at this and, and put some comments in there so the common council can know what's, what's going on.
Alan, what's your timeframe? When, when is this scheduled to go to full council?
Typically, typically, this is what happens. When, when the council committee submits something to planning commission for review and consideration, if there's any special note on it, I will bring it back to committee. It does not go back to full council right away. What happens again, if, if the, if the, the plan commission's action is to support it, they will go directly to a common council. If any conditions, then more than, or you know, minor stuff or something substantial, it does not go to a common council right away, go back to committee. So I'll put it back on a committee agenda for, so, and I'll bring all these comment back to them and they can consider whether they still want to move forward. If they do, they have to recognize that it takes two votes at the common council to, to approve the item.
Thank you. So Steve and Brian, we would like to take that opportunity to present it that we're declining it and let it go back to the committee.
I, I have a question.
Mike, you have, you have, you have a question regarding that?
Yeah, well.
Because, because the process with the committee is not in our purview. So I, I really don't want to get into what other committees and commissions do. I'm talking about based on what we have in front of us. Because I don't want to get into the details of what other committees or commissions do.
Well, my, my question was just about a prior conversation a minute ago.
Okay.
The, because I'm not clear what liability the city has having private property under our right of way. What is the, what adverse action could the owner take against the city? Because the city built a road over its property. Could they demand a high price that the city buy the land from them? I mean, because part of all of this deal is to solve the city property underneath West Cedar Street. Do you remember all that drawing in the beginning? And this was going to be like a swap, a friendly swap, as Alan Lowe described it. Or a friendly sale in two directions, I guess. So what, what?
What implications would, would it have on this?
Thank you, Steve. That's the word I'm looking for. What implications are there if we leave the current situation? What, and if this owner decides they want to take some action? The fact that the city obviously built a road, like built a street over their land. However, whatever, for whatever reason, historically that happened, that's not, that's not a concern. Right now, we have people driving and walking on private property on West Cedar Street. And that, this owner owns that. What legal problem does that create for the city?
Commissioner Musick, I'll, I'll just try to, I guess, briefly answer the question. It, which is, it's, it's, that's hard to answer because part of the answer would be the length of time in which that road existed of the property may result in, in the fact of, of ownership in favor of, of, of the city as a result of adverse possession. And it could get quite complicated from there. But from, to the extent that, that we're talking about right away, I'm talking from the curb cut, where the road edge curb cut begins and, and the area where you put sidewalk. And Alan will speak to this issue, I'm sure, in, in greater detail. But my understanding is that that, that's the area the city would like to acquire an easement over for purposes of, of providing pedestrian foot traffic. To, to that end, what, what we would do with any, any transaction is we'd have an independent appraiser hired by the city. And typically, as a matter of course, paid by, by the applicant who's seeking to acquire the land, the cost of the appraisal to, to value all the property rights to be transferred to, to address what those, what appropriate compensation is. So to the extent that it doesn't go through voluntarily and those rights had to be acquired in another, in a different course, which would be the condemnation process, it would be similar. We'd have the property appraised under Connecticut statute, two separate appraisals. You're required to take the average. You got to take the, the, the funds and submit them into the court with the proper filings. And more often than not, the process is bifurcated where you get the property rights, but the property owner then can challenge the value. And what you end up happening is having a valuation dispute. And it would be left to the court absent intervening settlement to determine what the proper value is. So one of the benefits of doing it this way is you know what it's going to cost you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just suggest we go with what Alan Lowe's resolution was, suggestion was? They take it offline and could discuss with the potential owner what the general pluses and minuses of this all are, bearing in mind the reservations we have as to the use of it and various concerns around the traffic congestion and the greenery. And let's see how it develops before we take it to Supreme Court.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baxendale. I concur with that.
So Brian Baker or Steve, would you put that in? Or was that a fact which addressed it into reasonable English language?
Yeah, I want to go over that again, Brian, so I try to type it as you say.
I don't, I don't think you need to put that in a resolution. I mean, if it's going to, if it's going to go back to the committee, then, I mean, we could always, Alan can report back or we can send a memo. I don't know if we have to get a resolution to give it back to the committee because I'm assuming if the committee discusses it with the potential buyer, that the proposal would come back to you for a second bite at the apple.
Could I just ask one? I'm sorry, could I just ask one more favor, which is that there needs to be some condition that they're complying with current regulations before we even consider selling another property? So I agree with Brian that we should have a process that. Current regulations before we even consider selling another property. So I agree with Brian that we should have a process that, uh. It goes back to committee as Alan was suggesting. So I'm assuming we're not taking a vote, that we're just referring it back to committee. I just want to make sure that our concerns are clearly expressed. So I guess it doesn't go in a resolution because we're not voting on a resolution and I don't know how that happens. But I do want to make sure that whatever goes back to discussion, it's also, there has to be an assurance. That the prospective buyer is complying with current regulations before any sale would be considered.
Yeah. So currently there's, there's no zoning violation on the property. So they're, they're technically quiet right now.
So, so basically Steve's recommendation is that basically we, we refer it back to committee. Alan has heard all the concerns around the room, I think. And I think he can be the honest messenger and the discuser of this review of this, I would imagine, knowing his previous history. What do you think, Mister Cleppen?
Oh, I, I, I would say yes, and defer to Mister Lowe.
Yeah, I, I, I want to make this, I'm not sure there's some misunderstanding here. I think when, when, when this common council committee submits something to planning commissions, we are asking the commission to vote on it. If you vote against it, I will bring it back to the committee. I don't believe the committee, the city common council has, has the requirement to be submitted back to the planning commission. I think once you take the votes, I mean, again, I, I think there's also a time requirement, right? When, when somebody referred to plan, uh, plank of eight dot twenty four, are you required to vote on with certain amount of time? I'm not trying to force the commission by any means. Don't get me wrong.
You're correct. I, I misunderstood what you were saying then.
Yeah, my, what I'm saying is that when we submit this to planning commissioner eight dot twenty four review. We are requesting, respectfully requesting the planning commission to vote on this, whether you support it or not. If it's, if you don't, do not support the request, uh, then I'll bring it back to the committee or the common council and they would decide whether they want to. Follow the direction or, or recommendation of the planning commission. And, and to not, not, not to do the project. But they decided, you know what, from the common council perspective that she's, you know, we're still interested in doing this. Then they were forward to the common council. It doesn't come back to the planning commission for your reconsideration. You go directly to a common council and it's two thirds both a common council to override what the planning, uh, planning commission's recommendation is.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And, uh, eight, eight twenty four, it gives the planning commission forty five days to. To make a, a, a decision on it. And if a decision is not. Action is not taken within forty five days, considered a denial, in which case it, it would, it would, the, the common council. Would then take, could take, could take overriding action, uh, by two thirds vote, but that's.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Darren. So Steve and Brian, what day are we in now?
Back to the same two options I gave you before, you can either, um, vote to deny the, um. Deny the request or you can approve it and then request that, uh, council consider requiring some landscaping or green space in that area, something like that.
Okay, so, uh, so, uh, so let's put it, let's put a vote together.
Tammy has something to say.
I just asked. A point of clarification from Alan, please. Is. Price Street and Fairview Street or Price Avenue and Fairview Street, are those actual legitimate city roads?
I don't know. Uh, I would think that, can, uh, Brian, do you, do you say, okay, show, can I show that plant, please?
Yeah, you want to show the aerial or you want to show the.
Roads, are they paper?
Yeah, I believe they're paper road. That's a different thing. Uh, that's a total different issue.
But you can see the other.
Right, that's a paper road.
That's how the company Materia accesses. The street, that's how they get to West Cedar or they come out onto Connecticut Avenue, right?
If you go back to, I'm sorry, Brian, if you go back to the, uh, the survey map. There's actually two pieces of property adjac- adjacent to the triangle that we have. Right? So even though they're material, they are supposed to be relative. I don't, I don't, I never met with the other folks, Frank and Anna. It's only three color, which is, um, what's his name? Um, the terror, I forgot his first name. Anyway. Yeah.
Dino.
Dino, yeah, Gino, right. So on, only he's the only one that approached us to, to acquire the property. So I don't know the relationship. I mean, I know that they're related, but I'm not sure what the relationship, what the strategy is. So there has never been our conversation. So I don't know what the, the future intent is. They potentially can join together and make a bigger, uh, more, more. More valuable development kind of thing, but that's again, what they do on the property, that's not our, our responsibility.
You know, you know what, you, you know, you raise a really good question, Alan. So whenever a private owner comes to the city to buy property, are there questions that we ask them? Like what is, what is the purpose? You know, how, how do they find you in the first place? Um, you know, what are their thoughts of, is there anything due diligence rather than just saying, I don't know anything, they just want to buy it? I mean, do we ask any questions?
We did ask the question. When they approach us, they are looking to do a, a, a housing development, upper level and with, with a couple of offices on the first floor. And they want to put the parking below gray and they, all they wanted is access drive through our property and they're prepared to buy the property for the city.
But thank you for saying that. Now, now, now that's more clear to us now because now what, what you're saying now is that they're looking to. Develop their existing property and use that, that parcel in question as parking and, uh, access to that property, correct or incorrect?
Right, the, the, the comment to us was this, that if you look at where the worth asphalt walk is, they want to put a driveway in there. To exit the lower portion of their property so they can put a below grade parking garage. And the reason I, we don't go into too far into it because doesn't matter what they say to us in the future, they may come a different plan. So we are, we, we can't condition or sell the property that they do something to their property. So they, based on their, they, they said, but their comments to us, we make those decisions whether we sell or not. But at the same time is that, let's say, five years from now, they decided that they're, they're relative, the other property to, to get, they decided to do something different. So we are not regulate, I mean, as a Jason property owner, they, they can, uh, as a courtesy, they can ask that, you know, if they're interested. They want to ask the city for the piece of property, they, they tell us they want to put a driveway. I don't know what they're going to do in the future, uh, but at the same time, this is what we base it on, but it's a, it's a reasonable comment, uh, request they're making. At the same time, we have interest in terms of maintenance of property. It's a triangle piece of property. We really don't do too much with. Uh, and taking, taking care of the property. Also, we need something from them. So, and also we're going to get market value for the piece of property we have here. And based on those criteria, the, the land use committee is interested in selling it.
So in other words, so in other words, their current use of the property is not. Uh, aligned to their currently zone for, so they look what they want to comply by adding residential and access to that property. From the parcel in question and it'll be something that we could potentially see as a benefit.
Right. I mean, at, at the same time, it's a, we get a market value for this and also that whatever they build, whether they build more or less, I mean, they have to comply with zoning regulations. And, you know, potential city get tax ready for the property tax in the future too.
Thanks. So, so can we take this picture off, please? Can we take the picture off? Can we take the picture off? So, uh, so fellow commissioners, so, um, I think we have a little bit more clarity on this. Does it, does the, does this new, what Alan just said, does it give you a better perspective on it or do you still feel inclined otherwise? Tammy?
I still think it's really important for us to know whether those other streets, Price and Fairview are city roads because. If they are, then he has, you know, legal access to his property on a city road. And. You know, that, I, I, I just feel like we don't have the right information to make this decision.
The commissioners, if I may, I, I, I give you an incorrect statement of, of the law slightly, and I wanted to just clarify eight twenty four. How it operates procedurally, um, just so you can understand what, exactly what the ramifications of, of today's action or inaction will be. So, um, what eight twenty four says is that, uh, you have thirty five days before this matter is brought before you to. To act on it and failure to act will, is deemed statutorily as an approval. If, if you, um, approve it, uh, then it goes on to common council and common council can then approve it by a simple majority. If, uh, you, you deny it, uh, it would still go on to common council. Loop through committee first by Alan, uh, in which case it would require a two thirds majority to over, to overrule or approve, or essentially approve it. But the failure to act, which I misstated. Is actually, um, over the course of thirty five days, actually, um. Acts as an approval of, of the item. I just wanted to clarify for everyone.
Okay. So in light with Alan Lowe just said, uh, since we don't want to spend too much time on this. Was there anything that the commissioners want to share or comment on based on what we just discovered?
I do have one comment. This is camera. When I just saw the diagram, the. I would say that the, the adjacent owner, Frank Materia. How is the liability? We are just dealing with, um. Uh, what is it? Three L, L C? If we're just dealing with them. What happens is down the line, they, they come up and say, well, we would have liked to put a bid on it as well. Or are, do you, you see what I'm saying? I mean, are we just, we're just dealing with one ownership, with one owner, um, to. And there's another adjacent property that may want to have use to it. But is there any liability if we just continue to do sole source as virtuous putting it, letting the, giving notice to the adjacent property that we are going to sell it?
Okay, so, um, so, so, so outside of that, Tammy, does anybody have any questions pertaining to what Alan just said about the potential? Use of that property?
Um, yes.
Mike?
I think, uh, Tamara just brought up a really good point about the other property.
Thank you. They're not, they're connected. I have, I have the M L S map and I think it's helpful to know that Materia owns. Both, he owns three parcels and the other person that Tamara I think is referring to.
Is Frank.
Right, they're, they're all, that whole four cluster parcel is owned by Materia. So the city property in question. Is owned, both parcels are owned by Materia.
The different family, different family members though. Gino's on the corner. Property on, up on West Cedar and then it's Frank and somebody on the, in the middle piece. We don't have to look at it, but.
Yeah.
There is, uh, there is, looks like, sounds like that might be a conflict, but I, I, right now, all I'm, I, I seem to be obsessed with, but I'm, I'm, uh. It's just a concern of mine. That the sidewalk is really inadequate there. You know, there's like an asphalt, like a, a footpath. That ends opposite Sun, Suncrest. Is that the name of that street that, that goes into Colonial Village? And beyond that. Alan Lowe had brought up a point that was very good, that if we want to build a sidewalk, like let's say a, an ADA concrete sidewalk. Straight up, uh, West Cedar on that side. The, we would have to buy the land from Materia and, and, and we, because we would have, uh. You know, we'd be on their land to build a sidewalk. This is going to get expensive and it's going to be illegal the way that, uh, Darren described it. It sounds like a, like a lot of law time and legal time and, uh, potentially, uh. You know, a lot of expense in order for us just to be able to make the street safer and put a safe sidewalk in. So part, I would love to just be able to approve that sale of that land or, or that purchase of that land. That is under the sidewalk and, and the street. And separate this out and not have it, and just approve that part of it. Is that possible? And then this corner lot have that as a separate entity because, you know, we, we, Alan, you combined the two because it was convenient. It made sense to do like the swap, a sale and a purchase, I guess, at the same time, but. Uh, is, is it make any, am I making any sense to anybody?
Well, I, yeah, I think what we're doing now, we're just, we're actually stretching, uh, the, 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 the what ifs and what could be's. And you all have valid points. The thing that I would like to, uh, ask is if we. The, uh, deny this request, it goes back to committee, correct, Alan?
Yes.
And then the committee would then listen to what we discussed about this application and then present that. To their own committee and then to the common council that has to have a majority vote, correct? Two thirds vote?
Right, if they decide to, to, um, to continue forward with it, then they have to have two thirds of the common council. If they, if they consider a recommend, they, plan, commission's recommendation, decide that they don't, to say we're not want to sell it, then everything stops.
Okay, so when Mister Baxendale mentioned these stipulations or the comments or so, that's irrelevant, correct?
No, uh, I have taken a position that even you approve something. Right? This is just a history because I don't think it's written anywhere that when the planning commission approves something with conditions. If the condition is substantial enough, I would bring it back to committee. So they understand that even the planning commission approves something, the commission has certain concern. And I, I will always bring back, back that to the committee before they send it to the common council for final approval. So you could potentially approve it with condition. I would still bring it back to land use and building management committee, the common council. They will consider those things on, and they can modify the action to include some of your, your requests of those conditions that you put on.
Okay, okay. So in that, that case, I, I move to approve it with conditions. And I'd like to go over those conditions. Uh, before those conditions, um, I would, uh, like for a vote. Uh, all in favor of approving the eight twenty four referral thirteen dash twenty building management. I'm sorry? Okay, yeah, um, so I, I would like to, um, uh, uh, put an motion to approve it. Referral, um, eight two four four thirteen dash twenty, build the management disposal of city property at the intersection of West Cedar and Scribner. And let it be resolved that, uh, to implement the plan of P O C D, plan of conservation and development, the goals they're in. And implement the plan of conservation development policy to seek to retain, grow and attract a wide range of businesses. To increase Norwalk's competitiveness and the grand list. And then let it be further resolved that, uh, the stipulations that we would like to discuss to be presented. To the common, uh, council and or committee. And those stipulations would be as what, Steve and Brian?
Can't hear.
I can't hear you, Brian.
Right. And you want landscaping included in whatever future.
Brian, you're cutting out.
May I add something while Brian's trying to get through again? Ferguson. I, I would be, I would be open and the other commissioners, I would be open to saying no development on this property. On the court, like no, no development on it, no, no driveway, no nothing, just, um, it, it preserves the green space. It, oh, it leaves options open for more landscaping if necessary. And it gives them the land they might need for their square footage, which we didn't talk about. But if they need, uh, you know, like if they need a larger parcel to do some development, this would get, there would be a benefit to them. But we could just say it's to remain undeveloped. And, uh, that's our, that would be our, uh, be it further resolved.
Now, now, now Tammy and Mary, Tammy and Mary, uh, you mentioned comments before. I, I'm thinking that based on all of your comments, that we have. Some apprehension with a development on that site based on the current use, but I'm also concerned about the city's liability. With pedestrian traffic and development to an applicant that has a history that I'm not aware of, but I was aware of today. That was not complying with, with, uh, with standard zoning, uh, zoning regulations. So Brian and Steve, how would you put that?
I, I don't think.
In here, if, sorry?
We can't give them a permit unless they're complying.
I can't hear you, Brian. I'm sorry, say that again. Yep, that's better.
So they wouldn't be able to get a zoning permit if they weren't complying. So I don't think you have to include that as a, as a.
Okay. 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 So.
Can I just ask, so, so I'm going to just ask Steve Kleppen, you had made the suggestion about landscaping. Is there anything else given the discussion that you would recommend? That could make that language a little stronger? Because I certainly don't want it just to go to, uh. Uh, approval for non-action. So I'm just wondering, Steve, is that as strong a language as we could put in? Uh, approval for non-action. So I'm just wondering, Steve, is that as strong a language as we could put in? Kleppen?
Well, as I said, yeah, I think you have two options. You deny it, which. It it's the same result as a non-action, but it's a different message that you're sending or two. That you, you know, Brian has started putting some language there on the resolution. You could also. Pick up on what Mike Mueschak indicated that your preference would be that the. While the portion of that property transfers to the new owner, that it does, it goes undeveloped. With any structures, I mean, you could say he could park on it, but you know, you have those kind of options. It's a non-binding resolution on the council, so they can choose to um, ignore it or they can choose to consider it.
And a good, uh, maybe a good term for instead of landscaping, just green space. That green space be included on any future site development. Cause land landscaping is a, that could be gravel.
Mike, what what would be the incentive for somebody to buy this property from the city if they? Couldn't do anything to it with the exception of your idea of adding square footage to the lot, which you know, maybe that's what they need, but we don't know that.
That uh, they're also uh, selling. Part of this deal that Alan put together was there also uh. And I'm not sure what the numbers are, but there's but they're selling the land that's under the street and the potential sidewalk. Up on West Cedar to the back to the city. So that this this is part, I don't know if we could separate this out, but I mean, it is a uh. It's a, it's a two-part. Deal, so it's to their advantage where. They're uh, selling land that is a potential liability for them if they wanted to sell the property to somebody else. Because there's an encroachment uh, of a street and sidewalk or no sidewalk, but a street on their land. So that's solved, but it does give them a larger plot. And so it put, it takes land out, I mean, the the. Overview is it takes the uh, land out of. Public ownership and puts it into private ownership, which will be uh, a part of the grand list and taxes will be paid on it. But I would say, you know, we would prefer. I don't know if we want to say insist on it, but we would prefer there be no development on that land on that corner. Uh, lot, the green space be preserved.
And that's what we were talking about before. So Brian, could you continue with the typing, please?
So do you want to go with that it's not developed or that it's? Landscaped? Cause it's got to. Or left as green space.
You could, you could do, you could say both.
When you're done, can you make it bigger, please? I can't read it. Thank you.
I I'm okay with that.
Okay, there we go. Um, Mr. Baxville?
It's unreasonable to ask them to leave it as undeveloped open space. They want to put an office building, but they said on it. Uh, still have good landscaping and open green space, but. I can live with our reservations as it's put by Brian so far. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, there we go. All right. So uh, we're gonna make the motion to approval. Um. And let's get a vote. Could you uh, get out of this um? This image here so we can see everyone's face. Okay. So all in favor of approving this application?
You second.
I.
You need a second.
Okay.
Probably, can I recommend doing a roll call mode?
Is there a second?
Uh, I'll second. Mike Mueschak second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
No. I'm opposed.
Let's do a roll call because I I don't know who's saying I and who's not raising hands. How about we do do that?
Tamara Shockley?
Hi.
Brian Baxville? Brian Baxville?
Hi.
Hi. Mary Penison?
Hi.
Tammy Galas?
Opposed.
So we have just one opposed.
And you, Steve.
Hi. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
And then do you want to go back to the um? The last one, Steve?
Sure.
Let me pull that one up, Brian.
I'll move to approve the resolution to move forward with the plans for Naramec.
Considered.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed?
Hi.
Any opposed? So move. Thank you.
Thank you again.
The next one? Brian and Steve, we're on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay, next one is eight twenty four referral fourteen dash twenty City of Norwalk Conveyance and Easement. From the city of Norwalk to Sono T O D LLC at one dash five. And eleven Chestnut Street report and recommended action.
Hi, everyone. It's Jessica Casey. Um, and I'm happy to have Brian share this screen so that I can give you a presentation. On the easements and the conveyance.
Thank you. We can't see it yet, so give us a second. This is up now.
Um, no, I think that's Brian's screen.
Jess, which part did you want me to get to? The maps probably.
Brian, if you, yeah, if you allow me to share my screen, I actually put it into PowerPoint, it's a little bit easier. Thanks. Can everyone see this slide?
Yes, Jessica.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thanks, everybody. So we're gonna um, just do a project overview and then I wanted to walk through the easements and then the conveyance for you. Um, the project is one that you've seen a couple of times before. Uh, the last time it came to you was in summer twenty twenty. It was actually May the twelfth and we were talking about right of entry approvals for. The one uh, Chestnut project that is a Spinnaker project. It's a hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet in mixed-use development. Fifty-eight hundred square feet of ground for retail, eleven thousand square feet of office. And there are a hundred and twenty-two multifamily dwelling units. It's located at the corner of Monroe and Chestnut. Um, in addition to that, um. We uh, it also has parking, a hundred and twenty-seven uh, parking spaces, seventeen of which are located on the adjacent lot. Um, part of the discussions that we had in May were related to the right of entry approvals that were required. In order for Spinnaker to pull a foundation permit in order to get started on this particular project. Um, as we stand now, we did take the easements and the conveyance uh, to Public Works Committee and they approved that. And referred it over to you at the planning commission. So the first evening that we wanted to talk about tonight was the driveway easement and this easement is seven thousand four hundred and twenty-four square feet. If we actually zoom in on the easement itself, um, we can see the hatched area here. So I am just gonna um, go back for one second here. What we're seeing here is we're seeing Chestnut Street uh, along the bottom of the screen, along the bottom of site plan. Um, and we're seeing Monroe up the side here. I uh, it's covered a little bit for me because um. I have all of your lovely pictures on the left, on the right side of my screen. So. But what we're seeing here is Chestnut and Monroe. The building footprint is here as it stands. Um, we have a parking lot adjacent to that and then an existing building adjacent to that. The easement that we're talking about um, is as the first easement is this driveway and the driveway is access to Monroe. Um, it's an important piece of this project because we actually uh, allows the residents to get into a second level. Parking garage, which is located in one Chestnut. And if you remember when we presented to you in May, the building has two levels of parking. One Chestnut has two levels of parking. The first level is actually accessed off of Chestnut Street where the resident would uh, go down Chestnut, they would pull in and they would access the garage here. But the second level of parking is actually in through Monroe where you drive up the, you drive up this lane way. Or you drive up this accessway and you would turn left into into um, the second level of garage. Now, a few questions have come up in the past. One is um. Why is it not just a curb cut? Why is it an actual easement? And in reality, railway place, uh, railroad place, which is what you're seeing here. Connects in from Monroe to Henry and it's not actually a roadway. It's actually an accessway. So if it was a roadway, um, that it would be a curb cut. But because it's not, it's actually a city-owned parcel. And as a result of it being a city-owned parcel, then that is why these easements are coming forward to you today. Um, if we zoom into this particular easement, you see the entrance coming in from Monroe, which is on this side here. Um, and you see, you see that easement, um, you see that easement and it allows. Uh, it'll allow the residents to be able to get into that second level of parking. Now, a lot of the questions we've had in the past is it's going to impact traffic? Is it going to impact uh, commuter's ability to get to the Sono train station and what are the impacts of that? Um, and we haven't uh, we believe that we that we've worked with a developer to be able to address some of those pressures. Uh, in doing that, we've actually worked with a developer to increase the uh, width of the road or the width. The mouth of the entry of off of Monroe to be able to include a left turn lane and a right turn lane. This didn't exist. Uh, this isn't current, uh, this isn't the current situation or the current configuration of the road. And so we believe that we we're alleviating traffic or we have the ability to alleviate traffic with that, with that piece there. So that's the first easement. Are there any questions that anyone has regarding this particular driveway easement?
Yes, so currently it's two lanes now, correct?
That's correct.
And uh, with this potential or this proposed easement. We will be encroaching upon their property as it stands now so that we they can have an ex, so there could be an extra lane, correct?
That's correct.
Because the other side is where the bridge is, correct?
That's correct.
So with that being said, you you don't see that there'll be any traffic? Problems going in and out of that uh, parcel on this, on the second level garage? And how many residents are we talking about?
Um, well, there's a hundred and twenty-two units, so minimum would be a one hundred and twenty-two. If we were to say. You know, two people on average to each unit, then we would have two hundred and forty-four. So um, the parking spaces are a hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces. Um, and seventeen of those parking spaces are actually located in this particular lot.
Okay, so the seventeen is on that lot and how about on the the main ground level from that lot? Cause we're not talking about one hundred and twenty-three total on that second level.
That's right. So we would end up having, uh, we'd have one twenty-seven. So fifty-five spaces, so fifty-five are going to be accessed on the second level.
Okay, okay, continue.
So you'd have, so you'd have fifty-five parking spaces on the top level, fifty-five parking spaces on the bottom level and then seventeen parking spaces in the lot adjacent.
I see. The only reason why I mentioned traffic is that a lot of people leave, well, despite COVID nineteen, we all know that things have changed dramatically, Jessica, but. Um, sometimes people leave work at the same time and at the same time at this lot. This or this uh, this accessway is pretty much used in the morning for people um, being dropped off or picked up. Or or buses, because it's a it's a bus up to. Um, and taxis and Uber and Lyft and everything else. So that's why I mentioned that. And it's a concern, you know, when you think about it. So continue on.
Thank you. Um, this is a rendering of the development that the uh, private developer has put together and. Basically, we wanted to show it because it shows you where the yellow circle is. It shows you where that driveway easement would be situated. Just to give a little bit more context.
And thank you for the picture. Uh, commissioners, could you all see the picture? Do the commissioners see the picture?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, just making sure.
Right, moving on to the second easement. So the second easement is the actual ramp easement. So this is the piece that attaches from the driveway easement into the actual second level of the parking garage. It's an easement of seven hundred and fifty-nine square feet and it's where um, the residents, those fifty-five residents would drive into. And drive out of the parking garage.
Jessica. Sorry, interrupt. Levels of the parking connected? Like, are the.
No, I.
Level connected with the second level?
No, it's not. So in order for residents to access the second level of parking in this building. The driveway and the driveway easement and the ramp easement are required.
Thank you.
Again, this is the same rendering and I've just circled where that easement is. The seven hundred and fifty-nine square foot easement is where the ramp connects from the driveway to the garage.
See. Thank you very much, Jessica. Anything else you want to add?
Um, I can walk through the next uh, easement if if everyone's ready. This third easement is two thousand three hundred and eight square feet. Um, it is actually the area that is adjacent to the ramp. So it's to the left and the right of the ramp area. It's shaded and if we were to zoom in, we can see it a little bit better here. Um, there's a portion here. And there's all, which is two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine square feet and a portion here, which is actually one hundred and seventy-nine square feet. This is in order to do um, landscaping as well as sidewalk development. So if I was to put the rendering up again, then you can see where the two arrows are. Would show where that landscaping is going to occur.
Okay.
There's also an additional sidewalk easement. Um, the sidewalk easement is actually down um, on the left hand. Or excuse me, on the right-hand side, you can see it here. Again, if I zoom in, you can see this portion here. It's a total of eight hundred and thirty-nine square feet. And again, if we were to look at the rendering, I've just um, put a yellow arrow as to where that particular easement is located. So we're really talking about the sidewalk construction off of Monroe all the way up. Um, all the way up along railroad place into the actual ramp as well as the sidewalks on this side as well. And then the conveyance piece, so um. Commissioner Ferguson, you brought up a really good point, which is when we talk about the driveway easement, we're actually taking, we have to have some of the. The the land transfer in order to be able to have enough room for um, for the area for the mouth to widen off of Monroe. And as a result of that, the conveyance is three hundred and twenty-eight square feet. So if we were to look at this little triangular piece here, that's the three hundred and twenty-eight. Square feet that we would require, um, that we would have conveyed back to the city so that the city then has that um, as part of the. As part of the entrance way. Now, one of the questions that we did receive uh, previous to the meeting was. Um, is this roadway wide enough to be accepted or does this roadway have uh, does it meet the standards of the city roadway? To be able to be accepted by the city if we were to transfer it into a road? And the answer is that in in uh, in the case of where. This configuration down by Monroe, it is wide enough. There is a little bit of a pinch point up in this area, in this particular area here. So we would need to take a look at that, but um, but as far as the improvements go on Monroe in particular, where the uh, left, right. The left turning and the right turning lanes are, this meets, this uh, has, we've worked with DPW to ensure that this meets the standard. And um, I do have Vanessa on from DPW and Darren on from legal, just in case there are any technical questions or legal questions. But I wanted to flag that because those are some of the questions we've received in the past.
Yeah, I I I have a question. Whenever a developer has a concept of building a property, right? When they present the drawings and the plans to um, you know, to this, to the city. You know, was there an easement involved initially?
So in order for them to, so their site plan was approved and went through all of these bodies for approval. Um, and in order to be able to, for the developer to build the plans as approved, the easements would have been required.
Now, were those easements required beforehand? These same easements here?
So these easements are, this is the first time that you're seeing these easements. Um, what we brought to you in May was the right of entry for them to build the foundation permit. These are.
And staging.
The easements that are.
Yeah.
And staging, that's correct, yep. And these are the, and in particular staging actually, because they needed to be able to stage in order to build the corner of the foundation, which was city property, which is actually right where the, the property line is, is shown right here. This is the first time that you're seeing, this is the first time that you're seeing these permanent easements and these, and this particular conveyance, just as part of the process and, and how we bring through the actual project itself. But to your point, the, the permanent easements were not approved ahead of time. This is, we're bringing them to you for the first time as part of, as part of the development process.
And just to refresh our memory and mind, the other easements were temporary, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So those easements were temporary. They were construction. They weren't really easements at all, actually. They were a, an agreement for construction right of entry. And the construction right of entry, we did not deem it as an easement. We deemed it as an entry agreement for a six-month period of time. That's already expired at this particular point in time. And we didn't, it was for this area here for them to stage. And it was, the foundation permit was actually budding up against the city-owned property right here. So you offered the right of entry agreement so that they could stage and they could do some work in this area on city property in order to be able to get the corner of the foundation in properly.
See. Is there anything else you want to add, Jessica?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? You want to leave the photo up for the commissioners or commissioners? Do you need the photo still?
No questions, Steve.
Sure. Go ahead, Brian. Backs and Dell.
No, no questions to you. Sorry. Mike has a question.
Okay. Mike?
Yes. Jessica, you may not know the answer to this, but I've always been conscious of snow removal and maintenance of sidewalks in our neighborhood. And I, and if these are going to be easements for sidewalks, will the owner be responsible for snow removal? Or are they going to, going to expect the city to maintain these sidewalks? And maybe this is just a really difficult question to answer because.
Always a difficult question to answer, right? So the driveway, the driveway easement and the ramp easement are permanent easements. Those are permanent easements. The sidewalk easements that we showed you are actually temporary easements. Those temporary easements allow Spinnaker to go in and lay the sidewalks and do all of the landscaping. And I believe that Darren can answer the question on the maintenance piece. And, and given the discussions with the attorney for Spinnaker.
Yeah. So Commissioner Musek, excellent question. So just carving out the driveway, which is, it's really, it's, it's its own piece. The remainder of the easements, which are two other easements, which were identified as the ramp easement and sidewalk easement number one. Because actually sidewalk easement number two is being granted from Spinnaker to the city because it's on their property. But those two easements, yes, the, the maintenance has been allocated to, to, to the developer. So they're obligated to, to maintain it, snow removal. But beyond snow removal, just general maintenance, as drafted in the underlying documents attached to the memo provided by, by Jessica and Vanessa, Steve and Anthony, include that, that piece of it. And I'm trying to pull up where the language is in the document. But I will, I will find it in, in, inside in a second here.
I would just hate for the first.
Yeah. So.
Take the snow off the sidewalk.
So yeah, section four point two says, except this provided herein, which that deals with the driveway easement. The grantee at its sole cost expense shall be responsible for installing, constructing, maintaining, repairing and replacing the improvements located within the easement areas. So it places not only constructing, but the maintenance, repair and replacement of those improvements upon the grantee, which is the developer.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I have a question. This is Tamara. These easements, I'm very familiar with the area. I, I drive by there every day. But now are these easements, easements just for entrance driveways? Are they easements access to the train station?
So it actually is an overlay. So basically what you're seeing, and I can, let me go back to, let me go back a little bit here. So basically what you're seeing is the, this is Monroe. This is the entranceway that you know of now. As Commissioner Ferguson referred to it, just as the, as the two-way, one way in, one way out. And you would, residents would come in, they would access the fifty-fives parking spaces here. But other folks would actually continue driving and they would drive up and the train station is right up here. So this is also the commuter rail traffic as well. So the commuters would come in and they would park. They would access the train station. This railroad place actually continues all the way out to Henry Street. So people can come in and out off of Henry Street as well. So the easement is an overlay over the railroad place, which is the existing roadway, except obviously there are some improvements as we've mentioned.
Any other questions, comments, commissioners?
Just one going back. Is that overlay, is that going right over the railroad station? Or is that leading into the, the driveway into the parking lot and at the South Norwalk Railroad Station?
Yep. So it's leading into the driveway that is already existing at Norwalk Train, at the South Norwalk Train Station.
So, okay, okay.
Commissioner Shapley, I think I understand your question. Let me just try to explain one way that it may be easier to understand. If this was a, if this was a public road, there would be no need for this easement because the cars would have the right to come in and out. So let's, if that entrance to their parking space, should that developer was a Monroe street, they would not need any easement because it is a public road. As you are familiar with the area, when you get to that driveway to the train station, I'm talking about the New Haven bound, right? So now that is not a street. It is just a parcel. A city owns that parcel. So for, for them to be able to build something that will have continuous traffic into that parcel, they will need basement. Would you be able to follow me? So if it was just a regular road there, we wouldn't need that easement for access because they will have already the public road that every car could go in. Because it's on a, on a parcel that we own and not a road, that's why we're doing the easement over the driveway.
So is this apartment building going to have direct access to the South Norwalk Train Station parking lot?
It's not. It is on the, on the access to the parking lot, on the driveway that goes through it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Just want to make sure that I didn't miss anyone. Okay. Well, let's, let's make an action. Brian, you mind pulling that up, Brian or Steve?
Yeah, just, just has this, there you go.
No worries. And thank you all for your patience, by the way. There we, we expand this a little bit. Okay. So I want to put a motion to approve this section eight dash twenty-four, referral fourteen twenty. So you know our conveyance and easement from the city of Norwalk to Sono TOD LLC at one dash five and eleven Chestnut Street. I make them, them, them to approve this as stated.
Seconded.
Have a second. Seconded by Brian Baxter now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? None? So moved. Thank you very much, Jessica, Vanessa for your time, and Darren.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night now.
So as far as time goes, before we go into industrial zone study and T O, South Norwalk T O D and the approval of minutes, you want to take a two-minute break, three-minute break, anyone? I don't want to hold anyone up. Are we good? Want to keep on going? Thumbs up if you want to keep on going? Or you want to take a break?
Keep on going.
Wow. Okay, we got some soldiers here. Okay, let's go. Okay. So discussion of other items, industrial zones, study update. Is that Steve or is that Brian?
Tammy, do you want to jump in or I can jump in?
You can jump in.
Okay, sure. So I think everybody here got a copy. I sent the link to the, to the survey that the committee has put together. It's, it's a different kind of survey. If you haven't looked at it yet, it's not a simple survey where you just answer a question and the fields are populated. So it's eighty, eighty percent of the people said this and twenty percent said that. It's meant to be an interactive dialogue where the response keeps changing as the new information comes in. So it's, it's meant to facilitate a discussion. So that was launched the end of last week and will stay up through the end of the calendar year. We sent it out through the Board of Ed's email service, through the library subscribers. I saw a Chamber of Commerce sent it out today. We're trying to get CNN A and ENNA and some other neighborhood groups to put it out to their folks as well. And I was on a call today with Darlene Young and the consultant team on trying to work on getting it out to more South Norwalk residents that are, you know, in proximity to the contractor yards because that's going to be a big bone of contention. So we're going to try to see if the churches can help us out in putting it out through their email blasts and maybe mention it at one of, if they have announcements at, at their services. So that's kind of the next step. The consultant team is also wrapping up their stakeholder interviews, which they should be done in the next week or so. And then we'll reconvene with the committee probably in the first couple of weeks in January after the consultant teams had a chance to digest all the information that's come back and then kind of tell everybody what they've heard so far. So that's kind of where it's at.
Thank you very much. So let's go to the South Norwalk TOD update.
Sorry, Steve, could I back up a second to ask, Steve, did we get a lot of responses? I sent in a comment on something. And then I'm not certain if this graph that we have is actual or are these, if it was up to date? Like if you click on that link, poll is link, is that accurate? Is that our information that's in there right now?
Yeah, he, when I talked to them today, they were, they were shocked at how many responses we've gotten so far, just in a couple of days. They're, they're really, really happy. They said they just did, I forgot the name of the community in Massachusetts, but it was a comprehensive plan for the entire community. And they said, and that was up for like a month and they got four hundred responses, he said, so far. Out of that one, he said, ours in a few days has already gotten half what they've gotten. So they're really surprised. So I think we'll, we'll get some good data that comes out of this.
Right. Well, could I, could I recommend that you resend it too? Because I think maybe we, you know, could get more people. It's like, you know, a reminder just to.
Yeah, that's fine. Send it out to the Nancy on Norwalk and the hour or two to ask them to, to promote it because I think that'll help get some responses.
Great. Well, I think it would be, and I don't know if all the other commissioners had an opportunity to answer it. I would think it would be great if they could.
I can resend it.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, Steve Ferguson. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Sammy. South Norwalk TOD update?
Very, you can jump in anytime. I know the, they're, they're still. So that group is a little further behind than the industrial zones folks. And it, it feeds right into the area we were just talking about at Chestnut. But the, they're kind of working on their communications plan now and then just refining the scope in the area that they're looking at. So that, it's coming along, but it's, it's a little, little further behind the industrials.
Okay. All right. And let's go to the approval of minutes. Has anyone got a chance to look at November seventeenth minutes? I got a chance to look at them. Everyone else?
Thanks.
Diane, thanks for abbreviating a lot of the discussion. We had a lot around that. So thanks for putting in proper order for us.
Bravo.
Shout out to Diana. Okay, let's go into the 2021 meeting schedule.
You have to also vote on the minutes now?
Oh, yes, you're right. Let's make a motion to approve the minutes. Can I get a second? Tammy, Lingalis? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? So moved. Thanks for the help, Diana. I miss Fran. I miss Fran right now. Okay. Let's go into the 2021 meeting schedule. It was a part of the email that we got there.
And this just reflects, we, just to make a mental note, this has the, obviously has your capital budget meetings. We added a third meeting to, you know, space out the, the night so you're not there so late. We, Brian and I have kind of roughly penned out a schedule to get the departments spaced out so you're not seeing, you know, like DPW and Board of Ed on the same night. And also note the meeting change where we previously were on the third Tuesday. I think now where we at the second Tuesday, if I'm correct on my recollection?
Yeah.
Looks so good to me.
That's good. You all, we'll just make sure, Steve and Brian, just make sure you update Fran on the schedule just to make sure she's in the loop of things, just to confirm that with her. Okay, and comments from the director, Steve? The last meeting, if you just touch on the fact he was going to follow up with DPW regarding the Bowden Street concerns that the resident had and some of the commissioners expressed. Don't know if you got a chance to talk to them, but if you haven't, would we get a response from you?
Sure. I, I think I emailed the commission about that, that the DPW with WPCA is already working on getting a consultant in to look at some problem areas. And that was one they had already flagged as, you know, they knew it was a concern. So they're working with a, you know, getting a consultant on board and they're going to identify areas like, like the Bowden Street area that have problems and then come up with a work scope and a budget. And then they'll, they'll figure whether that fits into a capital program or they try to seek different funding source to address it. I, I think it's a little early to say because I don't think they have a price yet on the, these repair costs.
I'm sorry if I, if I missed that, that you sent out to us. But what were the, what were the issues? What parts of Bowden Street?
I don't have the specific area beyond the, the area that we were talking about as part of the subdivision was included in that. I can, I think Vanessa's probably dropped off the call right now, but I can confirm with her tomorrow and send you guys an email if that's helpful.
Thank you very much.
You also, you also, you also confirmed, Steve, in that email that the current development we had under review had no impact on the current issue.
Right, yeah. So the, in general, when you're looking at a subdivision, you're, you're looking at impacts that that development may have on adjoining properties. And typically that's, that's from a surface water runoff, like if they're going to raise the grade, take all the vegetation down, those kinds of things and how that could affect others. The, the complaint that was coming from, from the woman across the street wasn't a surface water issue. So it was more of a city infrastructure issue and why it's backing up onto her property. So I think, and I'm not a hundred percent certain that it's not on her end versus on the city's end. I don't think that's been determined yet.
Thank you. Okay, just let us know, please.
Sure.
Any other comments from, from you, Steve?
Nothing else. Nope.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the commissioners? Mary, Tammy, Tamara, Brian, Backs and Dell, Mike Mieschek? Anything you want to add in for a minute? Thirty seconds, sixty seconds?
Thank you, Steve, for running a good meeting. Thank you, Steve, for running a good meeting.
I don't know about that, but uh, thank you for your patience, so.
It was more complicated than you thought, wasn't it? It was.
Yeah.
Well run, Steve.
Was, is Fran uh, not feeling well, or?
Um, she she actually had, she took her 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 mom to the doctor, had a lead appointment, so she was, she has something that she had to do.
It's fine, it was a personal.
Yeah, it's all right, just, you know, reach out to her and say, hey. Um, again, thank you for the patience. Um, and I, my hat goes, my my hat is bowed, my head is bowed to those who take the lead in these meetings. Um, thank you for you all uh, listening to me and being patient with me. Um, and I hope we all learned something new. Um, and uh, with that being said, let's make a motion for, and uh, to to leave.
I'll make them. And I'll second.
And Mary's going to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Diana, thank you again for the time, Brian Baker, thanks for holding them. Um, and.
Holidays, everybody, stay safe.
Thank you. And also, one more thing.
Thank you.
Before you go, don't leave, one thing, before you leave, Steve Kleppen. Um, for our January meeting for the Planning Commission for the Capital Budget, I would like to find a way that we can send everyone something to eat at their house, through Uber Eats or something. Um, so we can send everybody something to their house during one of those nights, and put it on the Planning and Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Bill, Department Bill?
Sure, that will, we'll, we'll look into that.
That'll be nice.
Because we have nothing else going on, so we have, we'll, we'll look.
Sounds good, thank you for the time.
I'm more concerned about how we're going to do this online, so uh, I look forward to that discussion.
Same here.
Thanks, everybody, bye now.
Bye.